In progress.
Tony.
Okay. Well, call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, July 26th. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Miller? Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Solfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And Vogelsinger? We have 11 out of 14.
Okay, thank you. Reminder tonight to speak directly in a microphone for our recording and broadcast for P A T V, whether you're online or in the room. If you're in the room, you can come up and adjust the microphone to whatever suits you so we can hear you and so that it gets broadcast and everybody can hear you. Item number three would be anything to be removed, added, or changed tonight? Nothing? Okay. Move on to item number four, which is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda tonight. Do we have anybody in the room or anybody online? Okay. Moving right on then, we'll go to the consent agenda. Oh. Yes, did you have something that was not on the agenda?
You come up and use the microphone so it's recorded, thanks. And if you could give your name.
My name is Howard Miller, and I was under the impression that there was going to be a discussion tonight about the possibility of the councilman bringing up a proposal about the sale of semi-automatic weapons.
That is on the agenda.
It is, I didn't.
It is on the agenda.
I'm sorry, then I.
It's item number 16.
Okay, I stand corrected.
No problem.
Thank you.
No problem.
Sure.
Make sure you sign in if you want to.
Yeah, if you want to talk.
You want to talk on that?
Sign in.
Okay, good.
Great, thank you. Okay. Next would be item number six, which is our consent agenda. Alderman Chantet?
Yes, we just have one item. It is revised resolution 22-48-R authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Pennsylvania and Kane County for household hazardous waste collection services. I remove that we approve the consent agenda. As read.
Motion by Chantet, second by Solfah. Roll call, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller? Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
All right, thank you. Next, we will open the public hearing for the annexation agreement for 2 South 303 Hart Road. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on anything on this?
It's not quite 7:05, do we have to wait 30 seconds?
Oh, I have 7:04, so you are correct. We will wait then. One of the things we have to do is wait for the published time that's written for these agenda items when they're a public hearing. So we just moved a little bit too fast to start.
I'll remember to make it 7:02 next.
It's always been five minutes after a meeting starts.
Okay. So now we will open the public hearing on the annexation agreement for 2 South 303 Hart Road. Is there anybody in the audience or anybody online that wants to speak during the public hearing? Okay. I don't see none. I'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Serone, second by Uwer. Roll call, please.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller? Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? And Uwer?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
All right, thank you. Up next is item number seven, which is ordinance 2238, authorizing execution of an annexation agreement for property at 2 South 303 Hart Road. And Alderman Miller has joined us at 7:06. Okay, this is in our ever, seems like unending quest to get rid of all the unincorporated islands and donut holes and everything else that are within the city. This is one of the properties along Hart Road that is not incorporated. After going through and finding that this really is a unique kind of property, this needed to be a single annexation agreement because there were some outstanding things that needed to be taken care of in that agreement. They would not be required to connect to city utilities unless and until they elect to do something to their system where it fails. They would have created, dedicate 40 feet of Hart Road to the city since they own to the center line of that road currently, and the city only has a prescriptive easement to use the portion of that which would become city jurisdiction after the annexation. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or questions during that or about that. If not, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2238, authorizing execution of an annexation agreement for the property at 2 South 303 Hart Road.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Solfah. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to zero.
All right, thank you.
Alan, before you go, can I ask a question? As these along Hart get annexed, do you plan to add sidewalks? It looks like there are sidewalks to the north of that but not on that property or to the south which are being annexed as well.
I think when we've discussed that before, we were planning on the ones that are closest to the school, basically a school route to get to the middle school. That's where we would look to branch out from, to extend that out, to reach those other ones. Because you are correct that both north and south of that Long Hart Road, there are sidewalks. Right. So I think that that just falls into the plan. They just kind of get folded into, you know, each year what we do, where we try to spread it out between all the wards and, you know, really focus on the safest routes to the schools as the main component in it.
But is that some, timing wise, we'd have to look at 2023 budgetary stuff?
Exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, every year we've got our sidewalk program that the city has dedicated $100,000 of general fund money to funding, bridging those gaps within the community, and that could be identified as a priority.
Awesome, thank you. Okay. And then up next is item number eight, which is ordinance 2237, approving conditional use permit for cannabis infuser organization and transporting organization, C R M Enterprises, at 1525 Paramount Parkway.
And Drew is available if anybody has any questions or.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? No, we only had, this is only our second.
And Chairman Wolf, I'll add that the applicant is on the Zoom call, I believe, if there's any questions for them. But this would be a conditional use for two aspects of cannabis use at 1525 Paramount. One is being the infuser component where they're putting THC and CBD distillates into food and other consumable products. And then the other part is a transport organization.
Okay, so basically they're just producing it there and then transporting it out of that facility to be sold or take it to retailers?
Right, so they would be receiving the cannabis oil that is regulated by the state, infusing it into products that they create there, and then they would be then transporting it to a dispensary for sale. So there would not be any, this is not a request to have a dispensary there is solely to produce products to be then taken elsewhere to be sold.
And just to clarify, they're just blending, they're not actually growing or producing?
Correct.
Correct.
Kind of the middle step of the production for that. Any other questions?
I see that Michael Sund has his hand raised. Mr. Sund, did you want to make any comment?
I was just, I was a partner in this business, and I just wanted to be here available to the committee or any attendees if you guys had any questions for us on the business.
Thank you very much.
I guess I just have maybe one question is, I know that this is something that we've talked about with any, any type of use, sales, anything else with cannabis. Is there enhanced security at the property? I mean, I'm sure you have to meet whatever is required by the state law portion of that, but is there anything you've done for security at the building?
Oh, yes, yeah, we definitely have additional security. We have a full security plan, which is submitted to the Illinois State Police, and we are oversighted by the Illinois State Police. So, yeah, we have a full security plan that's approved both by the state police and the state of Illinois.
I just wanted to make sure that that got said tonight because I did have a couple of comments and a couple of questions about that, you know, that that's something that everybody wants to know about, that it's not something that would be easily, you know, broken into.
No, no, we're actually going to be one of the most secure places. We're going to have magnetic doors, you know, everything's going to be sealed up, cameras everywhere. We live stream our cameras to the Illinois State Police, so they're tapped directly into our business at all times. So it's a very, very safe and secure business with these security plans that they have.
All right, thank you.
Nick, while you were looking that way, I was going to ask if the police had any issues, concerns, if they've reviewed this, what their thoughts were.
Yeah, with it not being a dispensary, it's just an infuser, voice relay transport, it's all regulated by the state.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2230, or send a counsel for approval, the ordinance 2237, approving conditional use permit for cannabis infuser organization and transporting organization for C R M Enterprises at 1525 Paramount Parkway.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Solfah. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to zero.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number 10, which is, I'm sorry, item number nine, Resolution 2274, authorizing sale of municipally owned real estate at 916 Park Street. And Scott, do you want to start this off?
Actually Drew has this one as well.
Yeah, I'll cover this one too. Yes, so this resolution would take the property that the city acquired as part of code enforcement efforts at 916 Park, essentially declare it to be surplus and authorize the sale of it. We have sold a few components, or small components of the property since we've acquired it to some adjoining neighbors, and we're, the city will retain a piece for, to provide some separation from the cemetery. But this resolution would authorize the city to go up to, or basically request bids on the property. The property has been appraised at $76,200, and at a minimum, we must accept a bid at 80% of the appraised value. But this resolution basically authorizes us to publish with a notice for a sale. We are setting the deadline for the sale as August 23rd for bids to be received. So we do recommend approval of the resolution board today.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Again, this is one of our quests to get rid of property that we own. Okay, we have no questions. I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 2274-R, authorizing the sale of municipally owned property at 916 Park Street.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to zero.
All right, thank you. And we'll move on to item number 10, which is Resolution 2278-R, authorizing agreement with Fathom Media to upgrade C C A V equipment. Alderman Rosado?
Yes, this work is for relocation and equipment upgrades for council chamber storage, and Howard's here to present.
Good evening. Yes, so with the building remodeling plan, the storage closet that we use is going away as a storage closet, it's going to be repurposed. So we have to move the equipment, the rack, and recable everything in this room to the projectors and upstairs and so forth. So we thought it would be a good opportunity to invest in some newer equipment and try and get rid of some of the old analog equipment. Some of the equipment that we have is over 20 years old, including the equipment that's right in front of you all. The microphones are at least 20, maybe 25 years old. So they're analog, and as part of this, we would be installing a wireless digital system. We would be able to get rid of that box on the ground there, that snake box, and the big black cable that runs to the back of the room, and kind of modernize and make this system a little bit more efficient. The vendor that we've asked to give us a quote on this was the vendor who installed the visuals that you see in the room now, the control panel here on the, near the podium, the screens that you're viewing, the projectors and so forth. So they know our system, they know what we need to connect to, and they've been very responsive, so we've been pretty happy with them.
Okay, Nick?
Yeah, where will the new equipment be housed?
That second doorway through that is going to be a new little store.
It'll be a lot smaller?
It's going to be a little smaller, so.
Okay, thanks.
Mark?
Just was reading through, and I'm pretty sure it's just the, the audio that we're going to do as wireless, right? We're not trying to do wireless video, correct?
No, the video system, there's nothing wrong with that.
No, I know, but sometimes people want to replace the wired video, and wireless video is just not quite there.
That's going to stay. Yeah, it's mostly the, the sound system.
Thank you. Anything else?
Any other discussion? Make a motion to move to city council approval of Resolution 2278-R, authorizing agreement with Phantom Media, Inc. of Oswego, Illinois, to upgrade and relocate the council chambers A V system with a contingency of 3% for a total cost not to exceed $55,074.
Second. Motion by Rosado, second by Serone. Roll call, please.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? And Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to zero.
Thank you. Right, up next is item 11, which is Resolution 2279-R, approving a contract with Q P testing to perform Cherry Park substation testing for an amount not to exceed $30,030, which includes 10% contingency amount. Alderman Serone?
Yes, thank you. This is our electric utility will be performing routine equipment testing at Cherry Park, the substation. Transformers, circuit breakers, reclosers, and protective relays will be tested as they are typically every five years. It has been budgeted for, and it's within the budget, under the budget amount, so anybody have any comments or questions? I have one question.
He moved.
Six foot 10, you don't sneak much anywhere, but apparently I snuck up here.
You say you have to shut it all down, transfer all power to the other substation while it's being tested?
I just, again, for the technical side, I'm going to turn also to Steve Allen, who is our assistant electric superintendent, he was here tonight. Is it getting completely shut down for testing? I think a lot of the testing, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, just getting mic'd up here. Yeah, that is correct, it'll be completely shut down. We'll be waiting until the cooler months in order to do that. I believe, we don't have a schedule yet from this company, but it'll be in the September, October timeframe after load comes down, and there's, there's plenty of availability to tie that to other substations, no issues there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, anyone online? With that, I will make a motion to recommend the city council Resolution 22-079-R, approving a contract with Q P testing for, to perform equipment inspection and testing at Cherry Park Substation.
Second. Roll call, please.
Who was second?
Second was Uwer, sir.
Thank you. Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? And Uwer?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to zero.
All right, thank you. Next is item 12, which is Resolution 2280-R, approving contract with O S I to provide hardware and software upgrade to the city's electric SCADA system for an amount not to exceed $277,347, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Alderman Serone?
Yes, thank you. This is an upgrade of SCADA, which is a supervisory control and data acquisition system, which is more than 11 years old. Gary, you want to give us a little overview on that?
Sure, yeah, this is a very overdue update. We've actually talked about this for several years now, but have been short-staffed in the electric engineering side and just have never been able to get this project off the ground. Back in 2011, at that time, our water, wastewater, and electric were all on the exact same SCADA system, and this decision was made back in 2011 to move the electric to O S I, which is a, which is the vendor name for the SCADA system, and move water and wastewater onto their own SCADA systems. O S I has been a great system, O S I is well regarded in the industry. One of the engineers that we've hired actually came to us from another municipality, and they use the O S I system, so she's very familiar with it. She's been instrumental in her first couple of months here in evaluating our existing SCADA system and identifying exactly what needs to be done to, to upgrade it and bring it up to, up to speed and up to standards for today. One of those things that we are going to do, going to do is to virtualize the servers as opposed to having physical hardware servers sit in our office, which was 2011 technology, but now in 2022, we can run those servers virtual. So they'll be workstations, other hardware that still resides here, and that's all part of this quote. And again, Steve Allen is here, if you guys have any more detailed and technical questions, I kind of reached the end of my technical knowledge on SCADA system.
Well, you're way past mine, so. My only question is on the, the financial side. It falls under account number, which I noticed the next item is to, so I know it's budgeted for, but did this fall in line with what was expected for this specific item?
The budgeted amount for this was 360, and this actually is then below that.
Okay. I see that. Explain that, it's the same, it's the same account number as the next item though, so this all just goes under electric utility upgrades or?
The way the electric budget is, there are some big pots, and that's, all these projects kind of come out of those pots, yep.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I just, I just want to make a comment. This is not my employer, just so.
Same letters, different employer.
Oh, is it same letters?
Yes. So I just, I just want to make that clear in case anybody has any questions. This is not my employer.
This company's out of Minnesota, and I know we have sent folks, actually when Steve worked here the first time, he went up there to training, and so, yeah, it's a good company out of Minnesota.
I did look just in case they branched off and I was aware.
Anyone else? With that, I will make a motion to recommend the city council Resolution 22-08-R, approving a contract with O S I to provide hardware and software upgrade to the city's electric SCADA system for an amount not to exceed $277,347.
Second, Uwer? Roll call, please.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? And Uwer?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to zero.
Thank you. And up next is Resolution 2281-R, authorizing a contract with electric conduit construction to install underground conduit along 680 Kingsland Avenue for an amount not to exceed Kingsland Avenue for an amount not to exceed 37, $573, um, which includes 10% contingency. Alderman, it's Rome.
Thank you. This is just authorizing a contract for, um, underground conduit and, and boring, which is, uh, within our budget and pretty straightforward. Um, hadn't been planned, so anybody have any questions, concerns? Did you wanna add anything, Gary?
No, just an, this is purely an infrastructure project to complete, um, complete the link between two existing cables, which will then provide a loop.
With that, I will make a motion to recommend the City Council Resolution 22 dash 081 dash R authorizing a contract with electric conduit construction to install underground conduit on along 680 Kingsland Avenue for an amount not to exceed $37,573.
Second, Uwer?
Roll call, please.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? And Uwer?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
Right, thank you. Up next is item 14, Resolution 2282R authorizing a contract with electric conduit construction to install underground conduit along 470 North Randall Road for an amount not to exceed $28,070, which includes a 10% contingency. Alderman, it's Rome.
Thank you. Same as the last, very straightforward. Um, it's in the budget, I believe. It wasn't as specific on this one, but.
Yeah, this, the reason why this one isn't in the budget is this is 100% reimbursable by the developer. So, we, we don't budget for developer projects because we don't know how many there will be or won't be in a given year. Um, but these projects are all done open book. The developer pays us as part of the building permit fee process and then we settle up at the end if they ask more, we, we refund to them. So, this is just 100% pass-through funds that the developer pays for, um, for their electric service.
Question, the last two items were very similar in a bid to the same companies. Did, do they, you ever group the bidding? Do they go out as a, um, package or does it have to be?
No, it doesn't have to be individual. And if these were, if these were, um, if these were all city projects, we would've grouped them together. But with this one being, uh, a, a service project and, and we wanted it to stand on its own because this has to be 100% reimbursable. So, that's why we did that.
Makes sense. Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Gary. With that, I'll make a resi, uh, uh, I'll make a motion to recommend the City Council Resolution 22 dash 082 dash R authorizing a contract with electric conduit construction to install underground conduit along 470 North Randall Avenue for an amount not to exceed $28,070.
Second, Uwer?
Roll call, please.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? And Uwer?
Aye.
Motion carried 12 to 0.
Alderman Wolf, Rahat has a question online.
I, I see that. Okay.
Rahat, you have your hand raised? You have a question?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to add that we, uh, sent out four projects all together at the same time, but asked, uh, the contractor to provide individual bid. So, they were grouped, uh, in a way, uh, so that we get, um, multiple bids at the same time, but they were not, uh, under one bid, if, if that makes sense.
To still try to get the economy of scale by having a bigger project, but separate bids, so that way we keep them legally separated for each job.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Okay, up next then is item 15, which is a discussion on Government Center Island Avenue parking.
Laura, I'll need to have you drop your sharing and then I can share. Fingers crossed. There we go. Thank you, Alderman. Um, one thing I noticed earlier, um, yesterday, and I sent it along to City Council, was the cover memo for this item, but the cover memo for this item was not included in the, uh, for this discussion, wasn't included on the website initially. So, um, I'll go through this in a little more detail than I normally would, um, given that it wasn't available to the public over the weekend. Um, as everyone may know, the city is currently out for bid right now for remodeling improvements to the government center, which is this building. And one of the major scopes that we're going to do is to create two separate and distinct entrances, one for the city hall side of the building and a second entrance for the police department outside of the building. And from the public's perspective, you'll be able to access either lobby, but you won't have access between the lobbies. And then also from the public's perspective, you'll be able to come to the city hall lobby and be able to have direct front windows to utility billing and community development for permits for the reception desk. Uh, but you won't have access to be able to walk upstairs to the second floor offices or upstairs to the theater without having a staff escort. So, we are trying to implement security improvements in the building to make it more secure. Um, we will be adding bathrooms, washrooms to both lobbies on the first floor, which right now, that's a very needed improvement. We have one washroom down the hallway for the whole building. Um, we're also gonna be adding restrooms on the third floor, which will service the community theater, as well as, um, staff will be able to access to the third floor. And then throughout the building, they'll be doing, uh, various remodeling of the office spaces, many of which haven't been touched, uh, well, some of which in the police department haven't been touched since the late 1980s, uh, but in the city hall side since the early 1990s. So, there are, uh, needs for updates throughout the offices. As part of the remodeling projects, um, the city previously came to City Council with a concept to discuss parking along Island Avenue. And as the project has progressed, we've discovered, uh, through the code review process, that we need to do water main work now on Island Avenue. And since I have a plan in front of me, I could kind of explain what that's going to entail. Uh, we actually need to connect into the wa, this water main here that's shown here, and we need to bring the water main up Island Avenue and then through the existing planter bed, because the existing, um, fire service area for the sprinkler system sits just in the other room off the Fox River Room there. So, we need to get into that room and per code, this is a code requirement, um, I'm not even sure what vintage the, the fire service is, but I would guess from the 80s or even earlier, that all needs to be redone to brought, be brought up to today's code. If you recall, a couple of years ago, um, we, we discovered a problem with the sprinkler ser, sprinkler system in the police department garage. So, we've already done some interior fire, um, improvements to the building, but this is the main service line coming in, and again, per code needs to be upgraded. So, that's gonna involve taking about 15 to 20 feet out of the existing planter bed just to do the underground construction to come through there. Um, on the website, were two sets of plans then. So, so there was a set of plans labeled "without parking" and a set of plans labeled "with parking." Both of those include the construction of a new mid-block crosswalk, so just to get your bearings for everyone who's watching, this is north, north is up. This will become the new police department dedicated entrance. And the existing police memorial, which is the memorial there where the police officers with the young child, that's, I don't know, they say it's a memorial. It's just a sculpture, I should say. It's gonna get moved right next to the police department entrance. It'll fit nicely there and be able to set the tone that you're walking into the police department. And the police department will also have a new canopy overhead that'll identify it, it as being the police. On the city hall side, there'll be a new canopy and again, labeled "City Hall." And one of the problems we have today, and everyone who came to the meeting tonight, who parked in the parking lot, there's no pathway between the parking lot and the building. It's a little easier tonight because we all had to walk in the north door, because the south door is locked, uh, for, for during night meetings. So, we all had to walk in the police department door, which is a little easier to access from the parking lot. But in order to get into this door, you actually have to kinda wind your way around the planting bed, uh, across Island Avenue with no defined crossing point in order to get in. It's not a very, um, not a very vi, um, visual appealing pathway, especially for people who haven't done it before. And, um, the new project is proposing a, a mid-block crosswalk that'll cross the road, go a sidewalk that'll then go up and, and, and bring pedestrians to the actual parking lot. Um, as part of this crosswalk, two new parking spaces will be added to the north, and there will be a monument sign out here, which announces that this is the government center and that within the government center is the city hall and the police department. So, there'll be a new monument sign, um, kinda in this triangular shaped area here. That's the "without parking" option, and then there is a "with parking" option. And I, I need to kinda go through these, these schematics, um, 'cause I, I, the one aspect I did not like about these schematics that I need to explain. You see this area here, and there's the rock, and it's very important to touch on the fact that this landscaping and the rock and the time capsule will remain in all scenarios. There's no plan to touch any of this. And yet, if you look at the second schematic, it's gone. And then that makes you say, "What's going on?" Well, they drew this schematic to show the parking spaces, which I get. I understand why they wanted to show you the parking spaces, but then, then they dropped the landscaping. So, really, if you could just envision this schematic with the landscaping and the rock and then parking spaces beyond that you can't see, that would be the "with parking" option. Um, both options, all options will include new landscaping along the foundation of the building. Right now, this is all turf grass. Uh, not that there's anything wrong with turf grass, but it certainly is very visually exciting. Um, so we, we will be able to introduce, um, new landscaping along here. And then these are the canopies that I was speaking of. These are actually heavy timber, uh, made to fit the character of the building. And on separate drawings that you'll be seeing, you'll actually see there's masonry, um, arch stone, stones at each of the entrance. One will say "City Hall," one will say "Police Department." Uh, again, the fitting of a turn-of-the-century building. Those will look very nice. Um, dropping down to this, this plan, the difference now is the "with parking." Although, in the week since I was on vacation and a few days prior to that, when this was first prepared, we had envisioned four spaces here. Scott Haynes has gone out now and discovered that we can only fit three spaces here. So, um, again, picture three spaces south of the crosswalk. It, the drawing's still the same, just one less space, and the rock and the landscaping all are still in their same spot. Um, so the, the discussion with City Council tonight has to do with the addition of these additional spaces on Island Avenue. And the last time we were here, there were certainly many council members who expressed a desire to, you know, promote pedestrianism, promote biking, and why should we be adding more parking, which will promote people driving here? Um, staff just wants you to consider the following factors, um, when you make your decision. Um, one of which is, a lot of people who visit utility billing are folks who, who, who are retired and who may not be as mobile. Um, and they, the, right now, it's a struggle because they have to go up to the second floor. We're really accomplishing a good thing by putting utility billing literally right inside the door, and it sure would be nice for those folks to be able to park in front of the door, walk in the door, pay their bill, and not have to navigate across Island Avenue. Um, one of the other underlying goals, again, is to create these separate sense of spaces, um, and to have a direct visual and physical path, um, which can be accomplished, you know, with the crosswalk here, is really gonna help to, um, define the city hall entrance as being its own and prominent entrance. Currently, we have short-duration parking in the west parking lot, kinda right out the window there. Um, we would have the opportunity to get rid of those spots in the west parking lot and bring them, again, right in front of the door here, so that someone coming in to do a shed permit or a building permit that, you know, takes 10 minutes worth of time or pay the utility bill, they could park right in front of the door, be here for 10 minutes, and, and be gone. Um, one thing that wasn't contemplated, well, may have been contemplated, I take that back, um, is the Flag Memorial, but I guess we've subsequently said, um, how the potential impacts that Flag Memorial may have on the west side of the building, especially on nights and weekends. We may need the extra parking spaces over there. We don't know that yet, um, but the way it's projected, we may just need them. It's been talked about having like tour buses come in, so, um, and the last thing, again, the plant, yeah, I should touch on the, the condition of the planting bed, 'cause that was one of the, the, the criteria or one of the con, uh, concerns that council raised. If you go out and look at the planting bed today, it's not in great condition. The walls surrounding the planting bed are all crumbling. They, they are not, it's not like it's brand new. Um, it needs to be redone if it's going to be kept. Um, so that would have to, we're not, by not, by getting rid of part of it, we're not really getting rid of, um, something that's in great condition, let's put it that way. So, staff is recommending to proceed forward with the "with parking" plan option, so that would be the, this option before you, which adds the two spaces and the three spaces. Uh, the other option, again, before you is this option, which adds the two spaces up there and just keeps the, basically has to end up modifying and rebuilding the, the, the existing, um, planting bed to the south down here. So, with that, I will turn over for council's discussion.
Does anybody have any questions? What, Leah?
Um, I have a few comments, but first a question. Does either of the plans keep the trees out here?
Uh, the, the with, the, the "without parking" can keep, I believe, the southern tree. The northern tree, we're not gonna keep at all, 'cause that's, that's gonna have to go with the water main work. The su, that there's this trees to the south here, kinda close to the rock, that, that could be kept with the, with this option.
Okay. Um, yeah, I really appreciated the walkthrough that you just gave us, 'cause I was looking at this earlier. Um, and I really like the plan without the parking. Um, I, I, I would hate to see more of the, the tree and the landscaping pulled out just for three, um, spaces, um, especially because without parking, we have those two additional parking spaces added on the south end of, in front of the, um, the police department, which does bring the parking much closer to even the city hall door, closer than even what we have now.
Yeah, those would be, kinda picture where the police sculpture is today in the bench. That's kinda where those two new spaces would fall in.
And then could perhaps, if we went with this plan, those could be, um, short-duration parking spots.
Right, we, we would need to work with Jeff and the ADA requirements. I'm not sure what would be by require, the ADA space also has, always has to be the closest in proximity. So, we'd have to work, but I agree with you, yeah. We'd be gaining two spaces, which are the same two spaces we have in the west parking lot, so.
But they would be closer to the door.
Exactly. So, we would move, we would move the short duration over, just a matter of where they would go based on ADA requirements.
Thank you.
That was gonna be my one comment, is regardless of which one of the plans we pick, that, of course, the, you've gotta remember that the handicap parking spaces for ADA will be the closest ones to both of those doors. And if we, we did it with the, the two parking fields, you'd wanna, you know, you'd have one ADA spot that would be in front of the police station and one that would be in front of the city hall door. Which, regardless of which one we do, I think that's a big upgrade. Is there drainage work as well, Gary, along the building? 'Cause I know we've talked about that historically, that we've had stormwater drainage issues along that side of the building. Has that already been fixed or is that part of this?
No, we did it, we did a lot of that as part of the building masonry project.
Okay.
And it was envisioned that, although again, maybe I'm not the biggest fan of this schematic, 'cause this seems to show more ornamental flowers. It was envisioned that these would be more deeper, deeper-rooted plants. Now, we could promote deeper plants all we want, but the fact of the matter is 18 inches below the top of the surface is limestone. So, we, we're not gonna promote too much infiltration, because the bedrock is literally right below the surface. But, but we'll do what we can to, um, to promote infiltration.
Okay. And that was one of the other questions, was this, how are we gonna set those up? Will they have to be, uh, you know, a small raised bed or something to be able to have that, so that it can still, you know, dissipate that water with plantings in it and the fact that it is sitting on top of bedrock?
Yeah, not much, not much space to work with, but I'd, I'd have to defer to a landscape expert for that. But our goal would be to try and do as best we can with infiltration.
Okay. Abby?
A few questions and comments. Um, one, where do the downspouts currently go that come off the building?
They come into that, that system that was modified then that we did as part of the masonry project. So, the downspouts are, are in that drainage system.
In that state, okay.
Yeah.
And then the, um, the sculpture going over by the police door would then replace the existing bike rack. Where would we put in additional bike parking? Or do I have that?
Uh, I think there's room there still for the new, for the police sculpture to slide over. If not, we're not repl, we're not proposing to get rid of any bike racks. So, if there's not physically room there, we would slide the bike rack. But I think there's room there, if my memory serves, 'cause there's the garbage can, there's grass there today, before you reach the bike rack. That's where the sculpture would go, would be in the grass.
Oh, okay. That makes sense. Um, and I'm with, I'm with Leah on the "without parking," without parking option. Um, even with some, some chatting today and photos that were sent to me of the area, um, and I've been, I've been documenting Batavia's parking problem for six years now. It's the only thing I use Snapchat for, is that I take pictures and I timestamp them with the date and with the date and the time to show whether or not our parking lots are full throughout the day, and different days of the week, different times a day. And I can say, after coming here pretty regularly for the past couple of years, you know, it's never had trouble finding a parking spot. So I think the cost benefit of losing the landscaping to gain three spots, the benefit isn't necessarily there for me. If anybody ever wanted to see or contribute to my library of parking problem photos, I'm always accepting other people's experiences and images to kind of make that case. I'll stop there, if anybody else wants.
I would just say I agree that without the parking, just keep the landscaping. Anywhere where we can keep extra vegetation, to me, is a bonus. There's just, I don't think that there's a parking problem.
Yeah, and I don't think there's a parking problem at all either. I think the main thing I would like us to see do is to have it be more of a focal point, that there are two separate entrances, and as we do all the other things we're going to do inside the building, that we focus on the public being able to know immediately where they need to go when they walk up in front of the building. Because I think it's readily apparent, even before meetings at night, sometimes you come out here and you see somebody that maybe has never been here for a meeting before and trying to figure out which door they're supposed to go in.
Especially when this door says council chambers, but you can't get to the council chambers in this house.
Right, and this one is always locked, and this is always locked. I mean, the whole project, all the improvements you're talking about are just so exciting and needed, and I think it's going to clear up a lot of those misconceptions, and I think we can do it with the without-three parking spots.
Nick?
Based on your Instagram photos.
Snapchat.
Snapchat. I don't do either, so. Behind where the police station is, that parking lot, is that typically empty?
To the north?
To the north.
No, that one's pretty full.
No, that's the employee parking lot, so that's pretty full all day long. And then also, the northernmost strip are taken up with River Rain, because their parking lot is, I think, insufficient for the number of cars that they generate.
No, I typically would say no extra parking, but I am so optimistic about the flag monument and what's going to happen there. I don't know what, you brought up a good point as far as buses and things like that. Has anybody thought of that? Like, what's going to happen?
No, but if they're coming on a bus, they don't need parking.
I guess it would, if we anticipate that the visits would be during times when City Hall was closed, then those buses could pull into the north parking lot and load and unload.
I would think nights and weekends, right? Mostly for those types?
I think most tourists, well, most tourists, but schools and stuff would be during the day, right?
I think, much like any of our downtown amenities, though, we talk about downtown parking and whether or not parking is the thing that's holding people back from coming downtown. I think, I mean, if three parking spots.
And three spots ain't going to make a difference.
Keeps people from the monument, the monument's not cool enough to worry about.
I'm just thinking, not necessarily those three, but that's a thing I didn't think about when planning for the flag monument, you know, the little things.
And I think it may be actually be important for us to work on not just have the meandering walkway that comes through to get over towards the Pack Bond Center, but also having more of a direct line from the corner here back to the parking lot and to the memorial.
Yeah, something to think about.
Because I think that that's going to be, there's going to be a lot more foot traffic down there than we think.
Yeah. And it is always awkward parking there and trying to walk over.
Anywhere.
So a couple other final comments. If we find ourselves in some sort of parking crunch in the future, we could always add the additional three spaces. And then, just this week, it was brought up by the Police Department, and I think it's a good suggestion for us to look at, and that is vehicle barrier between the roadway and the building. Leaving landscaping in there in some form or another, provide a physical barrier for vehicles also has its benefits. So that's something we still need to investigate and think about in-house.
Right doorway.
Well, with that comment, as far as being able to go back, I would side with leave the parking out for now, or to that side.
Sounds like that's the general consensus.
Yeah, we're seeking direction from council.
I think in the room here, I think that's general consensus. Is there anybody online that wants to make any comments on the parking, the extra parking or no extra parking?
No hands up.
Okay. Well, if there are no hands up, I think I would say your direction is to go at it with more landscaping, less park, three parking spaces, without the three.
All right. Thank you very much. Good discussion.
Okay. Thank you. And move on to item 16. And before we get started here, I just want to read something before. Thanks to everybody for coming tonight and being involved in what we're going to talk about. I just want everybody to understand that the council is not going to take any actions tonight. We really want to hear from our city attorney, his legal opinion on our home rule authority to regulate the sale of certain types of weapons and ammunition. City Council will discuss this matter, and we may or may not give staff direction to take some actions, depending on what that discussion brings out tonight. I'd like to make it clear that we're not voting on an ordinance tonight. We do not have an ordinance prepared. If we were to decide to go in that direction, we would have to direct our staff to prepare an ordinance, and then it would come back to this town meeting, to this body here first, and then go off to City Council at that point, after that. Both cases, there would be ample opportunity if anybody wants to comment on that. If you'd like to make comments tonight, make sure that you signed in. Anthony's got a pad over there, so we can call people up one at a time. And we would ask that you try to limit your comments to about three minutes. So we'll try to keep track of that. So basically, this came up, it was a suggestion that was brought to us a week ago by a former city administrator that called in, basically as a resident, and wanted us to discuss if we had the authority and if we wanted to use that authority to regulate the sale of certain types of weapons or, and/or ammunition or magazines. So our first step, really, I think, was we wanted to allow the discussion, have the discussion, and hear from our legal advice, from our city attorney, whether or not that falls within something that we can do, should do, what their opinion is, and how we may or may not go about moving forward with that. With that, I think we wanted to start off with Kevin. Do you want to give us?
Sure. So obviously, the issue of gun violence has been much in the news, and it hit very close to home with Highland Park recently. Gun regulation has a long constitutional history, but the issue in front of us is not a constitutional issue, it's a home rule issue. And as the council knows, the city of Batavia is a home rule entity, which means that we don't depend upon the legislation for our authority to act. We derive our authority to act directly from the Constitution, which gives us broader authority to enact laws that non-home rule communities, which only derive their authority from the legislature, don't have. There is some exception to that, the main one being where the state legislature has chosen to preempt local authority. So the issue that we have for us in considering whether to regulate weapons is whether we're preempted. So in 2013, the state legislature passed the, well, they amended the Foid Card Act and the Concealed Carry Act. And there were two main components of the Foid Card Act that are really at issue. One addresses the regulation, licensing, possession, and registration of handguns and ammunition for a handgun, and the transportation of any firearm and ammunition. The other component regulates the possession or ownership of assault weapons in a manner and then both of them, both components of that, have an exception. And that exception is that any ordinance or regulation enacted on or before, or within 10 days after, the effective date of the act would be exempt. So the state was explicit in the Foid Card Act that they intended to preempt local regulation of what I just mentioned. But they carved out an exception for any local regulation that existed on or before or was passed during that 10-day period, following the passage of the act, which is a little strange. I don't know that I've ever seen that kind of provision. And we actually have some guidance in case law, so the village of Deerfield passed an ordinance within that 10-day period, in which they regulated possession and transportation. And then, in 2018, they amended that ordinance to ban assault weapons. So the first ordinance was to limit the right to possess and transport, and the second, the amendment was to ban assault weapons. So that case went in front of the appellate court. It actually also went up to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court ended up tied three to three, so they didn't overrule the appellate court. So the appellate court opinion stands. And oddly, there were a couple issues in that case. One of them was whether the Deerfield ordinance was inconsistent, because the way the statute reads, it says that any regulation that is inconsistent with the act is invalid unless it existed on or before or was passed within that 10-day time period. So oddly, the issue became whether the Deerfield ordinance was inconsistent with the act. And they went, and the second issue was whether the amendment could stand. So the court, in reaching a conclusion that the Deerfield ordinance was inconsistent with the act, the Deerfield court said that this is a statute preempting all local regulation of assault weapons. So that was the conclusion of the court. And if you read the statute, there's, it isn't necessarily apparent from the statute wording that that's the case, but that's what the court said. And the court went further to say that any regulation of assault weapons beyond the mere requirement to possess a Foid Card is inconsistent with the act. So the court said, yes, Deerfield's original ordinance was inconsistent, therefore, it had carved out for itself the ability to regulate, it wasn't preempted. The second issue was whether Deerfield's had a right to amend its ordinance, and the court said yes, because they carved out their right to avoid being preempted by passing a law within that 10-day period. So the Deerfield case is pretty close to our situation. The city of Naperville is in the process right now of considering an assault on assault weapons. And the Deerfield city attorney has issued an opinion that's really, there's no analysis to it. He probably has some analysis, but the public opinion has no analysis, in which he says, well, the court, or the statute regulated, and this is the first part of it, regulated the licensing, possession, well, let me read it again. The Foid Card Act provides for the regulation, licensing, possession, and registration of handguns and ammunition for a handgun and the transportation. So in that list of things that were mentioned, the Naperville attorney says, well, it doesn't say you can't sell them, and that's, or that, so that's where he kind of falls. I think in light of the Deerfield court's opinion, that this legislation was meant to preempt all local regulation, that that's kind of the law of the land at this point. You know, the appellate court is the same appellate court that would hear a case in our jurisdiction. So it's kind of our law at this point, and the Supreme Court didn't rule them, overrule them. So the issue really becomes whether we fall within the exemption. And I'm just kind of laying out where we're at. I have looked at our ordinances. We have a 1972 ordinance that prohibits the carrying of a concealed weapon without a state license, basically, is what it says. So is that a law inconsistent with the state law? Keeping in mind that the Deerfield court said that they preempted all regulation other than the mere requirement of a Foid Card. It's kind of a thin position to stand on. So my opinion is, and I'm not foreclosing that there may be some creative argument that could be made, but it would be a pretty thin position, I think, to argue that we are not preempted by state law. So that's where I stand right now. I say that with the qualification, that if maybe there was more research, and maybe there was some creative approach to it, that I might find some argument to make, but that's where I sit at this point on it.
Can I ask you a question?
Okay. Nick?
Where does Naperville stand in the process? I mean, that's kind of probably either shut the dam or open the dam, isn't it?
They're about where we are, I think.
Actually, they're much further forward in the process, because they have drafted an ordinance, and I believe that that was a city council meeting that it went to, but it was, in their case, I believe they do first readings and second readings. And so it was their first reading, so it has not been voted upon to be made law in Naperville. But it is apparently at the step before that, because they do actually, they had an ordinance under consideration.
And again, I think they're focusing on banning sale on the basis that sale wasn't mentioned specifically in the statute. I would point out, this is interesting, that Naperville has the same kind of wording in their old statutes that we do about not carrying a concealed weapon without a license granted by the state, but they're not relying upon that in advancing their ordinance forward.
Kevin, if Naperville goes ahead and passes this ordinance eventually, what do you think the chances of a challenge of that action are going to be?
I would say that they're 50/50 or better, that there would be a challenge. And of course, if there is, you know, we may get some law down the road that will save, you know, that will expand on what the Deerfield court has said. Maybe it'll go up to the Supreme Court, and they'll get involved. I think it's fairly, I would say it's better than the average ordinance chance that it would be challenged.
Sounds like something that's totally ripe for challenge and legal action. Something that would incur legal fees, and maybe I'd say let Naperville take the, pay the buck on that one. You know, I mean, if they're the same, they have basically the same type of the home rule and the same type of a general ordinance under consideration, and if they're already farther along, it's going to be challenged, just in the climate we're in.
Yeah.
So, and based on the climate we're in, it'll definitely go to the appellate court. And then, again, with the climate, it's likely to head to the Supreme Court. Whether they take it or not doesn't mean it's, you know, if you just, because you do appeal to the Supreme Court, doesn't mean they take it, but I'd say let Naperville flip the bill.
And it'll go up to the same court that decided the Deerfield case.
the Deerfield case.
Right.
Yeah.
At this time.
Kevin, would I be wrong in making the statement that if the Naperville ordinance gets challenged, that they're probably looking at how much money in defending themselves? A couple hundred thousand dollars?
Probably three, yeah, six figures, I would think.
So, I guess one of the things that I thought about over the time since this was brought up to us was, this type of thing comes up, it seems like on a regular basis, that some series of events, or constant series of events, that brings this to the forefront, where people want to have some type of action. I really feel like if that's the reality that we want as a city council, to me, the better way than trying to throw together an ordinance and come up with something that, you know, limits the sale, or possession, or purchase of, you know, whatever you want to define an assault weapon as, I think it has to happen at a higher level than we're at. The inconsistency of what would happen if two cities in the county, or one city in the county passes something like this, if it does, you know, make it through a legal challenge, and it does stand, all that does is force people to go somewhere else, to purchase whatever they want. The feeling I have is that if that's the type of thing that we want to do, and we want to make some kind of change, then we need to get together with other city councils, with counties, with, you know, whatever we can come up with, and must be within our own state, to try to change the regulations that we do have to limit the availability, you know, or who gets what. I think that the biggest problem I see, and we've talked about this for several years, is, you know, the mental health issues that always play into this, and we seem to want to ignore some of that as we get into this, and the fact that almost every time there are signs and, you know, things that get missed, whether it's, you know, in the procurement of it, the regulation, or protection of the weapons that somebody seems to get a hold of that don't belong to them, or that their family has, or got for them, or whatever the stories are, that of course, I think, happen far too often. I think there's other ways that we can go about trying to solve this, and not put ourselves in a legal position where we're going to be a test case, and we're going to be the ones putting the bill to try to get something done, because we think that that's the position we want to have, or because that gets suggested as something that we need to do. So, I really feel like, whatever we do with this, we need to do a lot more research than just a week's time before we move forward with the discussion on this, because I think that there has to be some kind of statement, and some kind of action come out of this city council, and maybe if we can talk to people that we know up and down the Fox Valley, that we can actually change some of the regulations. I, you know, some of the background checks, some of the things I know about, other places within hours here where you could walk in, buy whatever you want, bring it home, and you got it. I don't know that that's the safest thing, but I also realize that we have the freedom to have whatever we want, and that's still, at this point, a constitutional guarantee. So, I'm not going to get us, or I'm not going to support the city putting us in a position where that gets thrown back in our face, that we're trying to restrict that.
You bring up a good point. So, Kevin, you were specific to say that you're really looking at whether we're preempted from doing this, you're not looking at constitutional law here.
No.
And Alan, you just brought it up there, it's whether we like it or not, it's the way it's written in the Constitution, and we all stood right in the middle of this room, and had an oath to uphold the Constitution. So, we aren't the right body, in my opinion, to do this. This is state and federal legislators that should be in a position to be changing it. As much as we would want to, as much as we want to see change, we're kind of bound by a higher authority in this case, in my opinion. I'm not a constitutional lawyer, I'm not a lawyer, but I, obviously, that's what we stood there and had an oath for, is to uphold the Constitution, and that's where, our hands are tied, and at least that's the way I feel.
And I'm not against us, you know, coming together and deciding that, hey, this is the way the 14 of us on the city council feel, and we would like to have, you know, whatever statement we want to make forwarded to every legislator that we can find. And that doesn't mean just the ones that represent us in this local area, but everyone in our state, and every one of them in Washington. And if that's the kind of statement we want to make, or it's something that we want to try to, you know, support, that's something we should do. And I don't think, to me, that there's really, other than political repercussions for each one of us, that's the only thing we really have to worry about. And if that's something we want to do, I can, you know, we can make that decision at that point.
Just one more comment on this. I mean, there's no reason to go into the woods on the situation, and Kevin has explained the analysis that he's done, the research he's done, I can tell you, it sounds pretty solid to me, and if you're preempted, there's no reason to even get into a discussion about the morals, or about constitutional law, because it's not anywhere near our place to do so. We have state law, which apparently preempts us from doing so, even with home rule. If another community is farther along, and they want to put an ordinance in place, I still say let them foot the bill on this one, and then we can readdress it. But this is not a situation where we need to do anything, where people start pointing fingers at one another, we go extreme right, extreme left, we just do the analysis of the law that's applicable to us, and it's just not a possibility right now. And I think that's the end, that's the end of it. If there wants to be further discussions about the issue, that's, or about, you know, gun control, I suppose that's something else that can be done at a different time, but it's not really something that we, as a council, need to address, because we can't really do anything anyway based upon the law that would be applied to anything that we could do.
Is there anybody online that would like to make a comment?
There are no hands up.
Okay. Anybody else on the city council want to dive into this?
I agree with Chris, everything he said.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak?
Anthony, do you want to call the first person
All right. The first person on the list is Howard Miller.
Good evening, and I'll pull this down. Good evening, and first of all, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Howard Miller. My family moved to Batavia in 1988. I am a Vietnam-era veteran. I served as an air traffic controller in Pensacola, Florida, from 1963 to 1966. As some of you may know, I'm a former drafting and architectural teacher at Batavia High School. We have five grandchildren attending schools in the district. A 15-and-a-half-year-old at the high school, a 13-and-a-half-year-old, and a 12-year-old at the middle school, a 10-year-old at Hoover Wood, and a nine-year-old at Gustafson. Just like many parents and grandparents around the country, we're concerned about the children's safety while they are in school. I'm sure that the communities of Sandy Hook, Columbine, San Antonio, Parkland, Northern Illinois University, Buffalo, Aurora, Uvalde, and Highland Park never thought that a mass shooting could happen in their neighborhoods. We must do all that we can to prevent gun violence. There are many of us who agree that a step that can and should be taken is banning the sales of assault weapons and multi-capacity ammunition clips. These weapons, the choice of most of the mass shooters, have no place in untrained civilian hands. They were designed for one purpose, and one purpose only, to be used by the military to maim and kill as many of the enemy as possible. As the International Association of Police, of Chiefs of Police stated, quote, "The IACP has been a strong supporter of the assault weapons ban since 1992, and our membership has approved several reauthorizations of support in the years since. The membership took this action because we, as law enforcement executives, understood that the criminal use of semi-automatic assault weapons posed a great risk to our officers and the communities they are sworn to protect," unquote. I have recently started a chapter of the Brady United in Kane County. Brady, which was named after President Reagan's press secretary, Jim Brady, who also got shot in the assassination attempt. Brady has one powerful mission, to unite all Americans against gun violence. We work across Congress, the courts, and our communities with over 90 grassroots chapters, bringing together young and old, red and blue, and every shade of color, to find common ground in common sense. In the spirit of our namesakes, Jim and Sarah Brady, we have fought for over 45 years to take action, not sides. And we will not stop until this epidemic ends. It's in our hands. We, Brady, join with Moms Demand Action, Giffords, and other similar groups to work together to get our legislators and public officials to create new ways to curb these disasters. But the key part of what we believe is, take action, don't take sides. This is not a Republican issue, it's not a Democratic issue, it's a human issue, and the safety of our children and our communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker, go ahead, Anthony.
The next name we have on the list is Mike Langston.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council on this issue and discussion. I have many comments, but I'm going to reserve those for the time being. I have to say that I'm greatly impressed with the discussion that went on amongst the city council here tonight on this topic. It was open, it was reasonable, and I think the legal guidance by the city attorney was very much on point. I believe that at this stage of the time, you have ample information to consider this, and what the next step would be for the city council to take on it. I'll reserve my comments for a later time, if that becomes necessary. But thank you for really an honest demonstration in city government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be Dean Purley.
Hi, my name's Dean Purley. I've lived here my entire life, all 65 years. I've heard of and dealt with this issue to one degree or another since the probably late 60s, so for some time. I would like to point out, the first gentleman who spoke, I would like to reiterate every example he gave of these heinous acts with these guns. I'd also like to point out that on many levels, and I'm sure these gentlemen over in the corner here with the stars on would agree with me, on many levels, what was done was illegal, on top of being insane. Law after law after law is broken by criminals, criminals, insane people. I guess my question is, by adding more laws to the books, how do you figure you're going to even slow, I'm going to use those, are you going to slow these people down? Isn't that what we're really talking about doing? I think most people realize that there's no way to totally stop some insane person by running amok and hurting or killing other people, but I just don't see that putting another law in place, making it illegal to sell one of these guns, really, any gun, is going to do anything to make me, or my wife, or my children, or my grandchildren any safer. None of these laws that are in place seem to be doing it. So, I guess what I'm saying is, are laws really the answer? Do we need maybe go to a different direction? From what I've just brought up here, it sounds like it's more of a mental issue, sociopathic, just plain insanity. It's more of an issue, and again, telling someone that they can't sell one of these guns, what you keep referring to as assault weapons, I don't really know what an assault weapon is, I don't think, I think that's actually a made-up term by the anti-gun crowd. Sounds real bad, very scary. So, I guess I would suggest be careful not to rule on your emotion, use your intellect, common sense. Maybe ask yourself, what we decide to do, how is this going to keep, will this have any effect on any of this heinous stuff going on? Maybe that would be a good guide for you to keep in mind. As far as, the gentleman keep bringing up state laws, and the state Supreme Court decisions, I would like to point out that this gun in particular, you're talking about banning the sale of, this is, there's over 20 million of those in use in this country alone, let alone the rest of the world. This is a commonly used for multipurposes, recreation, home defense. It is commonly used by many criminals also. And why is that? By I say criminals, they're not allowed to have these, it's against the law for them to have them. Again, that goes back to, how many more laws do we need saying the criminal can't do this? When do you think they're going to start paying attention to the laws? I just, I just don't see that any more laws suppressing something like this. Again, probably the most commonly used firearm in this country. I cannot cite, I believe, as in early 90s, the Supreme Court of the United States said that you could not do that. It was reiterated in Heller, and it was again reiterated here a few weeks ago. This is clearly the most commonly used weapon for multiple reasons, and you can't slow down, stop, take away specifically that. This is something that the common man can afford and use to defend himself, and I would also suggest read the Second Amendment, read it very closely, and make sure you understand word for word what that says. And I think that, you're afraid of going against the law, in this case, the law of the land, the Constitution, the federal. Keep that in mind as you're attempting to make new laws, and make sure you're not infringing on that. And that would go a long way to not having to fight out in court between the Second Amendment, and probably some ICC rules about restraint. and probably some ICC rules about restraint of trade. There's all kinds of things that could come up. Again, I guess I'm just saying, read this stuff, make sure you understand it, and anything you decide on, make sure it doesn't go against that. And I think that's all I have to say for now.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd be glad to answer any questions on this you might have for me, or I'd be glad to meet with anybody about it after hours, too. You got my name, phone number, and email on the list there. Feel free to call me anytime.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Our last in-person comment is coming from Brian Nollenweg.
Good evening, committee members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Brian Nollenweg. I'm a resident of the Great Second War in the city of Batavia. I've lived almost entirely here since 1987, with the exception of a couple of years. For the newer members of the council, old timers, old timers know me. I was a police officer in town, served for twenty-nine years, twenty-six with the city of Batavia. During my time, I served as department firearm instructor. I earned the master firearms instructor certification from the Police Training Institute at the University of Illinois in Champaign-Urbana. I am, like you, sickened every time I read of innocent lives lost due to the illegal actions of a criminal. I believe the other 2.2 million residents with Foid cards in this state are equally appalled. 2.2 million people out of the state's 12.67 million population. Roughly seventeen percent of Illinois citizens own firearms based on these numbers, and these numbers come from the Census Bureau or, and/or the state police, based on the latest published numbers. If you extrapolate those numbers, seventeen percent of Batavia's population would mean there's approximately forty-four hundred twenty firearm owners in this city proper. I don't know the exact number, that's just based on the statistics. I'm here to tell you, we are not the problem. Please don't punish us. Many of these law-abiding citizens own AR-15-style rifles, which I, and I initially thought this was a discussion about an ordinance to ban the possession. I've been corrected, I understand that. The problem with this is, if you ban the sale of firearms and/or ammunition, that opens the door wide open. The next thing you're gonna do is want to ban the possession of them. So overnight, you'll make criminals out of forty-four hundred people. This does directly affect a gentleman in the audience here who I've come to know over the years, Chris. He's an owner of a local business. I don't talk to him about his business, I don't know what his numbers are, but I can tell you the AR-15 is one of the most popular rifles in the country. Banning AR-15s, the sale of AR-15-type weapons and/or the ammunition would probably have a detrimental effect on his business. I also know his wife and his kids, and I'm really sad he didn't bring his kids here tonight because they're pretty awesome, and you'd get a kick out of them. But back to business. So I'm assuming, based on what I just spoke of, that those are the ones you would be considering banning the sale of, as well as the 223, 5.56-millimeter round at Chambers. Colt, the Colt manufacturing company, first introduced a civilian semi-automatic version of the Armalite AR-15. AR is not assault rifle, it stands for Armalite, which was sold to civilians beginning in 1964, which was also a great year, the year I was born, fifty-eight years ago. So we didn't have mass shooting problems back in 1964. This weapon has been around for fifty-eight years, and you gotta ask yourself, what has changed in the past fifty-eight years where people are just going out and shooting up shopping malls and shooting up parades? So an ordinance that arbitrarily bans certain firearms or the sale of certain firearms based on physical appearances or the caliber of the firearm will create criminals out of the forty-four hundred twenty Batavia residents who are mostly law-abiding good citizens. For instance, a Ruger Mini-14 Ranch Rifle with a wood stock chambers the exact same round as an AR-15. One is a scary-looking black rifle, the other is a quintessential hunting rifle. If I brought, I'm not going to, but if I brought both rifles in, you would point to that one and say, ban it, don't ban that one. They shoot the same round, they're capable of chambering the exact same number of rounds. One thing I'd like to point out, in my twenty-nine years of law enforcement experience, is criminals don't obey laws. Make all the laws you want, they just don't obey them. Whether it be a federal law, state law, or local ordinance, criminals do not care. Chicago and Cook County already have assault weapons bans, as has Highland Park since 2013. They, Chicago and Cook County have some of the strictest gun laws in the country. Based on Chicago PD, Chicago Police Department statistics, they reported sixty-five people were shot last weekend, five fatally. Based on strict, the strict gun laws they have, the city of Chicago should be a utopian paradise. Unfortunately, it is not, because criminals do not obey, nor do they respect the law. And I know some of you may agree or agree with me, you may not agree with me. Please keep an open mind and listen to what I have to say. On November 21st, 2021, a criminally intentional, a criminal intentionally drove a red Ford Escape SUV into a Comfort and Joy Christmas parade in Waukesha, Wisconsin, killing six people and injuring sixty-two. After that occurred, nobody called for any bans on vehicles as a whole, or certain types of vehicles such as red ones, or Ford Escapes, or SUVs in general. The blame was placed squarely on the individual responsible, not by, not on the means he used to carry it out. Evil is always lurking in our midst, waiting for the opportunity to strike. Evil is nothing new. Throughout history, evil people have done evil acts to good people. The first documented murder was in the Book of Genesis when Cain killed his own brother Abel with a rock. A rifle, handgun, knife, or SUV isn't capable of killing anybody or injuring anybody until acted upon by a human being. A city ordinance, state law, nor federal law will do nothing to stop evil. The only way to stop evil is to identify it, isolate it, and contain it. One thing I'd like to point out, if you aren't a firearms enthusiast, take a stop-down at Chris's store. Stop in. Number one, if you don't have a Foid card, you're not going to be able to touch, you won't be able to handle any firearms. That's state law, you can't even handle a firearm. So if you get a Foid card, go in, talk to him. Chris is an awesome person, he's very knowledgeable, he's very skilled at his craft. I consider him a friend. I've gotten to know him over the years, and this, if this ordinance, the discussion of an ordinance was to pass, it would directly affect him. Thank you for the opportunity to, the opportunity to address you. If you would like to discuss factual information about firearms in the future, please feel free to ask me, and we can meet at a later date. Anthony has my information. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one more member of the public who would like to speak online, Dustin Piper. Dustin, you have your hand up, would you like to speak?
Hey, yeah, sorry about that. Just in to, to answer the, you guys can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. To respond to the previous two inquiries about whether legal action could have an effect on the occurrence of gun murders in the country, it's worth pointing out that historically, at least in the last few decades, this is, the gun violence we see, we've seen in this country is a historically American problem. There are few, if any, major third, first-world countries today that have the gun violence problems that we see here in America, and many of those countries have in fact used legal means to reduce the spread of more dangerous firearms in their countries. The most recent, one of the more prolific examples being Australia, which after a devastating school shooting a number of decades ago, was able to reduce their gun capacity in their country. And they had very much a gun culture similar to ours due to the sort of frontier nature of their history. If they can do it, the question is, why can't us? In terms of the argument of whether criminals would obey this, naturally they wouldn't, but so much of their capability to have firearms is an available, availability issue. The previous speakers pointed out that Cook County has fairly strict gun laws, at least for American standards, but still has a lot of violence. It's worth pointing out that Cook County is also abutted fairly closely by the states of Indiana and Wisconsin, which have fairly lax gun laws, which means that it's very easy to get guns into that area without too much hassle. So it's, it's somewhat disingenuous to point out gun control laws in a specific jurisdiction without looking at the broader area. Now, this does point to the logic that us being a small municipality can only do so much, but at the end of the day, sometimes it takes small concerted local action to really start a movement towards broader national action, and thus, us making a stand here would probably, would likely help with moving that sort of grassroots energy towards a broader societal change. I'll take, I will say, I'm not against all guns, there are lots, I come from a rural area myself. Things like shotguns and standard rifles have very important and useful purpose in everyday life, from hunting to protection from dangerous animals if you live out in the country, to admittedly fairly standard recreation. But at the end of the day, that's not what we're talking about here. It's the higher-capacity rifles, it's the fast-repeating rifles, and in many cases also pistols, that have that sort of concealability and ease of use in criminal activities. We should keep a good sort of focus on what are, what are more easily abused weapons and what are more practical weapons in our, in our analysis here. Canada, for instance, has fairly strict gun laws when it comes to higher-capacity and higher-firing weapons, but they are often fairly lax when it comes to rifles and shotguns. And since this, this jurisdiction here is talking about those more dangerous weapons, I, I'm only repeating this just to say that it's not a broad against-weapons mentality, but it's a firm acknowledgement that some weapons are more dangerous than others and can be more easily misused. And if we want to end this epidemic of gun violence in this country, reducing their accessibility, although it will take a while for it to take effect, is going to be necessary, as we've seen in many other countries. So that should about cover everything I had to say, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. So is there anybody else that wishes to speak tonight? Brian, would you like to come back up? Come on up to the mic, gotta be on the mic.
Maybe frame it.
So just point of order. In Illinois, we're, we are required to have a Foid card to purchase firearms or ammunition. Indiana, Michigan, Wisconsin, they don't have a Foid card that is required. If I go to a gun store in Indiana, in Michigan, in Wisconsin, any of the neighboring states to purchase a firearm, I'm still required to fill out ATF Form 4473, that gun shop is required to submit that information for ATF background check before I'm allowed to leave that store with a weapon. So Illinois, we already have a seventy-two-hour waiting period, so if I go into Chris's store and if I want to buy a firearm, I don't walk out with it, I have to wait seventy-two hours to purchase that. We've heard Mr. Miller mentioned Jim Brady. President Reagan was also shot. That firearm that was used to shoot the two of them was a .22 caliber Saturday Night Special revolver. .22 caliber is the smallest, one of the smallest calibers, I mean, it's, it's a plinking gun. So, I mean, it doesn't take much, if you're gonna be talking about high-capacity, whatever, .22 caliber revolver was the pistol that was, or the revolver that was used to shoot the president and Mr. Brady. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, did you want to say something?
First of all, I'm not here to get into a debate, I just have one thing to say. We were told that reducing the sale of certain weapons doesn't cut down on violence. I ask you to examine what happened after we passed an assault weapons ban? Gun violence went down. What happened when it was not renewed because it had a sunshine law? Sunset. Thank you very much. The amount of violence went up. That's public, that is knowledge of actual figures. I'm not gonna go anymore, just ask you to look at what happens when we do reduce the sale of assault weapons and when we let the law pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Abby?
To your points earlier about our limited capacity here, given what we know so far, in a week's worth of, you know, ability to prepare for this, I know that I know, I have a lot more reading and research to do about the options. I think there is a lot more that this council could do in terms of, not tonight, but discussing what our vision would be in an ideal situation for the city of Batavia, and find the groups out there that are currently working on gun safety, gun safety issues. So if it's Brady United, if it's Moms Demand Action, if it's some other group I'm not aware of that's working to make our kids safer and make our community events safer, I want to hear what creative solutions they're hearing about, they're working on, that the state is working on. I would like to have more Representative Hershaw here to talk about the legislation she's seeing being proposed or discussed. I want to know, I, I'm not willing to let this just be, you know, a one-and-done discussion tonight, feeling like there's nothing we can do, because I never believe that that's, that's the reality. There's always something we can do, and so if, if somebody else would back me up, I'd like to, I'd like to make that, you know, a scheduled thing that we get into a little bit deeper and have some representatives from these groups that are working on it to tell us what other options might be out there.
I think that's completely off-topic and off-point of what this was about. We were supposed to be talking about whether or not Home Rule Authority would give us the ability to regulate the sale of certain types of weapons and ammunition. That's why I made my statements earlier, that if you just go by what the law says now, seems like we're not permitted to do that. The discussion you want to have is more of a moralistic, more of a broad-based discussion, which certainly can be had, but I don't think it is part of what we were discussing tonight.
Sure. I could save it for the other to bring it up, but it is the next step, knowing that in the context of what this action item was tonight, that it sounds like our hands are tied and that discussion maybe is over. So as far as next steps, to say that the objective of making our community safer is not yet met, that would be my recommendation for moving forward.
I was not here last week during the city council meeting where Bill McGrath shared, but I did go back and listen to it, and I appreciated his thoughts. Thank you, Kevin, for being here tonight and sharing all of that about Home Rule and where we think, as Abby said, right now, where our city stands. And I thank you to everybody who came out tonight to share your thoughts and your opinions, there were a lot of things shared, and I know they are all coming from your heart, and I... A lot of things shared, and I know they are all coming from your heart, and I thank you for being here. Along with Abby, I think I would like to come, to take time to go away and think about this and have some discussions and be able to come back and have, to revisit it. I'm honestly not comfortable at the beginning of the discussion tonight, where there was the discussion about, well, let's not move forward with anything because we don't want to deal with the legal fees. I don't want this to be a money issue, where we're talking about budget holding us back from a discussion. If this is something that we as a council and we as a city want to have a discussion about and want to move forward with, money shouldn't be the topic here. So, that should not be the thing that will hold us back from discussing. So, I'm not saying where we're at with this, or where everybody's standing, or where our council is, but I just want to be clear that that is where I'm at, so.
And I'm not meaning to say things one way or the other, right or left, I was just saying from what I do for a living. From a legal perspective, I think that this discussion was very well-framed by our city attorney with the research and the investigation he did, and I believe that he brought the issues out. So from a legal perspective, I think that's what the purpose of this discussion was. So I don't want to have, I don't want to be portrayed as being somebody that's saying one side or the other is right in terms of the whole gun-control moralistic situation, but I think that this discussion needed to be focused tonight, I think it was. I think that further discussions on a general topic could be warranted at a different time, but that's not what this discussion was about.
Okay. Sure.
Do you have 20 seconds?
Sure.
Dean Purley, I would just like to reiterate, when you're making these decisions, I ask you to make them with your intellect and keep your feelings out of it.
Thank you. And I do appreciate everybody that came down tonight and everybody that talked. This is something that, you know, several of us that have been on the council for a while, we don't get a whole lot of interaction in city council chambers, especially on committee night, so this is something that we're okay with. Not all agree on all the subject, but at least we have people that are interested and involved. So, thank you for spending the time down here with us tonight and going through this. Thank you. Okay, move on to Item 17, which is project status.
I just have a couple of things. I wanted to ask council, we had been inviting the other taxing bodies to meet with us to talk about their strategic directives and things of that nature. The library meets the third Tuesday of every month, and now we don't ordinarily, but I was wondering if you would like to, they said that they're available to meet on August 23rd, or would you prefer that we invite them to a night when we would typically have our committee of the whole meeting? I think if it was just on the 23rd, it would probably be less than a one-hour meeting.
I still have all my Tuesdays blocked, so.
Yes, I'll put.
Yeah, I went.
Keep it for the 23rd, because then what, that offers the opportunity to do is, they can use one of our rooms to have their board meeting before, and then we'll meet them at the conclusion of their board meeting.
Okay, you want to do that here?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I was just gonna say, I don't know what space accommodations they would have for us up there, so.
We're gonna be in here as a regular committee, as a council meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then I am pleased to announce that I had mentioned as part of the update of the strategic action plan, that the city had applied for a spot to be part of a pilot project about operationalizing DEI in the workplace, and we received notice that we were successful in our application, so we'll be joining that program for the next six months, which is really exciting, because we did just start our Workplace DEI Committee, and it's a very active group, who are looking forward to the technical assistance that this can provide for us to, as we seek direction on the right steps to take next. Anthony has organized a meeting with Polco, the company that we're partnering with to do our community survey, as kind of like a kickoff meeting, both to discuss a game plan for the community survey, but also to discover, Polco is some pretty powerful software with regard to community engagement, and we're very interested in learning about those tools. And if people are looking to see the update to the strategic plan, we do that on a quarterly basis, and I presented that at the city council meeting, but today Lori Botterman put up some information, both on our webpage and social media, so that people can see that presentation and also just kind of track our progress on that. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Alderman Miller?
I wanted to ask you if you could update us on any information you've gotten from the park district about our discussions about the dam and the depot.
I don't have anything beyond that they are waiting for the report from Hitchcock Design Group about, they had contracted to have them do a side project, if there was an impoundment, what type of amenities they might be able to expect from that. I think that they're supposed to receive their results this month, and so I will report at the next meeting about what the status of that is.
That reminds me, too, the money that was available through IDNR for the dam removal, is there a timeframe or a drop date on that, when that's gonna expire or go away or disappear for us?
It's any given budget. So, right now, it is in the state budget, that money exists, but it could very well be in the very next budget that they vote on, that they scoop that funding out.
And I just wanted to know if you had heard anything from the administration there, if they had said that we would not be able to have that if we didn't make a decision by the end of the year? And with our last agenda item, that we talked about having another discussion about that, do we want to set a timeframe, come back and have that discussion after we can all get to the point where we think we've done enough reading, research, whatever we want to do to get to that point and have another discussion? Do we want to pick end of August?
Send some invites to people working in that world.
Okay, or beginning of September, if we needed to be able to get some people here to have a discussion about it?
I almost feel like September might be best, because people are probably still doing some summer.
Right.
Travel.
Good idea. I will still be traveling September. I'll let you know when.
What? How dare you?
After the middle of August, I only gotta worry about Friday night, so it's all good. Okay. No other questions? Does anybody else have any others?
I have one, it sounds rather trivial after our longer discussion, but the issue regarding garbage stickers on the east side is wearing its ugly head once again, you know, and we need to think, I think that it might be appropriate to bring in somebody to explain why.
And Chris Rooney is right there.
All right. On demand.
And Vaughn, sorry.
My name is Chris Rooney, I'm the District Manager for Waste Management. Right now, I'm gonna turn it over to my friend Vaughn here, who's gonna talk about, I'm gonna, he's gonna talk about our sticker sales concerns.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. Again, my name is Vaughn Kirschner, I'm the Public Sector Rep for Waste Management for the city of Batavia. Chris is our Operations District Manager. So, Alderman, in response to your question, and I know staff has had some similar questions as well, currently, right now, we have seven vendors. Unfortunately, most of the businesses are on the west side of the river, and we have, I think, one or two, maybe just one right now, on the east side. We've been working very hard to try and find some more vendors. When Walgreens stopped selling stickers, it was because they changed their operation as far as their systems. And we've been working with them, believe it or not, for almost two years, trying to get set up in their system. It just has not worked. We have weekly calls trying to get set up, so hopefully, we're getting close, and once we have them on board, there'll be someone on the east side as well.
They're actually the west side.
Still west side.
Real quick, who is the east side?
Right now, I guess maybe everybody is on the west side.
The 7-11 on Butterfield, they're.
They, well, they are also having some problems. I've talked to Peter, he's the owner over there. He does want to sell them, but they're also having problems with their systems. So as soon as they get them cleaned up, he'll be happy to resell them. That's the one on Butterfield, North Aurora. I am happy to say that the Shell at 200 Fabian, I just talked to him today, and he is very willing to sell stickers. I'm meeting with him Thursday to get them set up, so that'll hopefully be another one that will be on the east side. The other thing, we did have a couple other sticker vendors on the east side, but they've decided not to sell, they just are very frustrated with the whole process. I've met with them numerous times, and they just decided not to do it. So, one of the things that we're facing is, there aren't as many businesses on the east side, and there are becoming more and more businesses that just don't want to deal with it. In fact, I talked to another one today over on 710 East Fabian, and he just said, no, I don't want to deal with it. So.
Do you know why? Is it, they just, it's, there's no incentive for them to really sell them, because people are just coming in, buying a sticker, and they're like, I've got somebody working overhead, and I'm not even collecting a penny for that overhead?
Right. It's basically just a pass-through for them, and a lot of times, residents just come in, buy it, walk out, there is no added sales for them. I tell them about the extra 2% that they can add for the credit card, which is, you know, per the waste hauling contract. They said that really doesn't cover all their expense for credit cards, so they just do not see, as you pointed out, an incentive for them to sell it. And with their employees, it becomes very difficult, they have to train, it's actually like money, stickers are like money, and so they have to keep track of the inventory, and they just don't want to deal with it.
Was it more of not wanting to deal with it, because what expense would be incurred in this? I mean, you just give them a stack of stickers and they scan them.
Yeah.
It's the tracking.
They have to track, they're all numbered, so when they, it's a simple order process, they just either call or email into us, we send them to them. They have to keep their inventory, they keep them in the safe, just like with their money, every night, they have to check, count them and check them, because like I said, it's basically money, that there's, you know, and they just, they have just got, the people that I have talked to that don't want to do it anymore, they are very adamant, you know, I don't want to do this, it's too much, too much of a pain, so.
So, you're in a service industry, I'm sure this probably, we're not unique, right? What other things have you done with other communities to help solve this issue, besides, maybe it's because we don't have a lot of businesses, I don't know, I mean, the liquor store, people go in the liquor store all the time, but what other solutions have you been able to come up with the other communities, even into the future, you know, knowing that this is an issue?
Sure.
What, you know, what, right now, we can't sit here and talk about, you know, our contract or renegotiate it, but, you know, for me, I'm like, part of the service is picking up our garbage, but the other part of the service is making sure that my residents can go and get a sticker where it's convenient for them. I can tell you where it's convenient for me, and I make it work for me, but not all of my residents are like that, and those are the people that are calling out and complaining, and have threatened to just leave their garbage all over the community.
No, you know, I thoroughly understand the frustration that the residents have, and like I said, it's something that we have, you know, tried to work with Gary and Scott, we've been going out and trying to drum up new vendors and so forth. To your point, what do other communities do, there aren't a lot of sticker communities left. There's a few, but not too many. Most have changed over to basically all carts, and got rid of the stickers, or they go to a hybrid.
Which I think we are a hybrid, somebody can order a cart.
What I'm talking about as a hybrid is, everybody has a cart, and they can pick a size, and they're limited to that cart, and then anything extra is a sticker. So, your initial is, you know, whatever size cart you have, and then that typically takes care of the resident's garbage. But every once in a while, if you have a party or holidays, they'll need a sticker to, you know, cover all their garbage. So that's what Elgin uses, and it's very, very effective, and it works. But, the sticker program is one that's kind of going by the wayside, and you're just seeing communities move towards carts as a whole, or some kind of program with carts.
With carts. And there's multiple-sized carts?
Yep.
Real small ones?
Yep.
Where they only have like a little bag of garbage every week?
Yeah.
I actually have neighbors that buy the bags.
Yeah.
And Chris and I have talked about that, because, you know, your contract's coming up next year, and we've talked about, you know, how we can approach this, and one of the things that, you know, I wanted to share with you is, I would encourage you to really seriously consider moving towards carts, and we can talk about how we can make it effective for everybody, including seniors, things like that, and maybe even still keeping the half-bags available to the seniors, because the city hall is the only one really that sells the half-bags.
Right.
So therefore, you're keeping the seniors, you know, happy with that, or a small 35-gallon, in many of our communities, only seniors can get the 35-gallon cart, and the other residents have the option of like a 96 or 64.
I'm just looking to close that gap between now and the time that our.
No, I understand.
Contract is up, I don't know. Drone delivery?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, get something with Amazon, like, bring the drones and drop.
Scott and I have had numerous conversations, he even came up with some kind of vending machine, and, you know, Chris and I talked about that, it would be quite costly to develop something like that, but, you know, just thinking out of the box, different things. I mean, it's.
Delivery service?
Yeah. Delivery service, right, just like Amazon, right?
I might do that. Buy a bunch of stickers and, yeah. Eastside stickers, who needs them?
So I guess the bottom line is now there's no answer for the east side.
Well, and again, like I said, we got.
Delivery service, Chris, we can't come to the east.
We have Shell, the Shell Station at 200 Fabian, that's the east side, right? We're still working with Walgreens, even though we say it's on the west side.
Well, there's a Walgreens in Aurora that would feed the sixth ward very well.
Yeah, there's actually three Walgreens that we would hope would come back on board.
How about Speedway?
Speedway, we've talked to already, but they're merging with 7-11, and.
That 7-11's the issue, too.
Yeah, they have this system issue, they're kind of trying to, you know, pull together and.
Pizza parlors, Rosati's, the new pizza place, liquor stores.
Oh, I appreciate it, I mean, we talked to the Chamber, actually, Chris talked to the Chamber and got some ideas from them. They talked about like the BP on Butterfield, Batavia Smoking Liquor, Craft and Smoke, so those are three that I have to personally take a look at. I've also talked to the 7-11 on Wilson right here, that's definitely on the east side.
Yeah, that's a good one, but again, I get it.
She is a, they just became a corporate store.
Yeah.
And she's a little apprehensive right now, she's trying to get her, you know, arms around everything, and I've reached back out to her last week, and we're just waiting to hear back from her, but hoping that at some point she'd be willing to do it. At this point, she isn't.
And what happened with Burke's?
Basically what I said earlier, he just got very frustrated with the whole situation and.
They had some, they've had turnover there, too, so they don't have their regular staff that was there for years.
Yeah. I mean, great guy, great place, but it just didn't work for him. We had numerous discussions, and I, you know, tried to.
That would have been a good place for a vending machine. That would have been a good place for a vending machine.
So I understand the frustration, not only with the residents, but with the council and the staff, and we're doing our best just to try and to add, and like I said, we got this one, and we'll keep working at it, and we'll keep working at Walgreens, and...
So sent you here just for the PSA for where can people get them right now?
Actually, I have a list for you guys, I've made a list, so I can hand that out for you, so, actually...
I've heard Menards, Ace, Jewel. If you go to Menards, you can get your...
7-Eleven, 7-Eleven on Butterfield isn't on this list, because as I mentioned, Peter is still trying to get things worked out with his corporate, he's willing to do it again.
Now, you say for your, for the people that actually are selling them, when you, they call in and they, you send them to them, if a resident were to call in, can they get them mailed to them?
Yes, yep. If they call our customer service department, they can, yep, for sure. And just to let you know, for example, Jewel and 119 South Randall, they've, these are just 20, 22's numbers, they've bought the most. Probably the least would be the Jewel in Aurora on Yola, is that how you say it? Ace Hardware is the second most, so you got your Jewel and Ace Hardware with the most stickers sold right now, or at least bought, I should say.
That's what they ask everybody, no matter what you're buying, they're like, do you need garbage stickers or stamps?
Stamps for stickers?
Yep, stamps for stickers.
Is hardware sold stamps, really?
No, the Jewel.
Yeah. But again, thank you for the opportunity to address this issue, and Chris and I will continue to work at it, and if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out to one of them.
Try the liquor stores, we love liquor.
We actually have tried a couple of them, tried a couple of them, and...
Thanks for pounding and paving. Keep it up.
Thank you both for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know I was going to get an answer and answered on the other medium.
I have another other, I had a resident reach out with a question about whether or not Batavia participates in the text 911 initiative, which I had heard of, but probably hadn't heard of in many years, and wondered what that was and what our status is with it.
Can somebody pass Sean a microphone? That'd be a good one to get on the recording.
Nope. Do you know how to turn that on?
This will be quick. So yes, you can text 911, Tricom, which is our dispatch center, went online with that, I think 18, probably 18 to 24 months ago, it's been a while. We get the monthly statistics, not many people participate in it, but yes, there is that capability and ability to text the dispatch center, whatever your emergency is.
I think one of the things that Abby is talking about might be the code red, I want to say is what it's called, and I'll look. From time to time, we promote this, it's where the Tricom has the ability to do geofence, and for the people who are signed up for this text messaging, they will notify you. For instance, in our neighborhood, a couple of years back, we had a shelter-in-place order due to a police situation, and all of our phones lit up with the message that we were to shelter in place. But you have to sign up for the program, and so we'll make sure that we put that on our regular calendar to, you know, several times per year, add it to the e-news and have it in social media. I heard that same story today, Abby, about Highland Park having...
Oh, no, I haven't heard that.
They said that they had 3,000 people that they were able to, like, send a text message to in that area that, about the situation.
No, I've never heard of that, it was specifically to text 911, to text...
Oh, okay.
There is also technology, Laura, which is what you're talking about, where if we have a situation where we're looking for somebody, or where there's a situation that's occurring in a specific area and we want, you know, residents within a half a mile or three-quarters of a mile of whatever that point is, we do have the technology through the county and through Tricom to do that as well.
Great, thank you.
Any other other others?
I have a question.
Nick?
Is there, the 31 road diet, is there an update on that, you know, schedule that we're, where we're going with that?
No, but I'll have Rahat give an update on that at our next committee of the whole meeting. We are digesting what we received back from IDOT, and it seems mostly favorable, although they do have that recommendation for keeping the same lane configuration between Wilson and Main, but we can bring that back for a discussion about how to respond.
Yeah, I thought about that, like, I thought of the Geneva part by the King County government, it's four lanes, and then it goes down to two. But no pedestrian traffic over there. People from the county building might cross over to go to town, but otherwise, that's not their central business district. Right, yeah.
But they also have a nice split there, too, with traffic, keep on cruising down 31 as opposed to going into 3rd Street, so.
And nobody in the northwest side will be able to cross over when it's two lanes, because we can't get that sidewalk on on the east side of the street, so, until we get that.
Okay, that's another discussion now.
Right.
Okay. Then if there are no others, we will move to adjourn. I get a motion?
Move.
Motion myself, a second by you, or all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night.
Good night, everybody.